Good afternoon, welcome to this special council meeting on April 21st, 2021. The meeting is being conducted in accordance with emergency directives from Governor Sisalak. In-person attendance for the meeting is limited as a result. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more items for consideration may be combined. And any item on the agenda may be removed or a related discussion may be delayed at any time. With that, I will call the meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with our initial public comment period. We do not appear to have anyone of the public in attendance for this meeting. However, public comment may have been submitted prior to the meeting via email or voicemail. And the phone line is available for anyone wishing to call in at this time. Comment during this period is limited to those items on the agenda. Speakers will have up to five minutes. And as always, we ask that you be civil and concise in your comments. Again, this is the initial public comment period for this special council meeting. Anyone wishing to comment? Madam City Clerk, were there any written submissions?
No, Mayor.
All right, hearing no one, we will close the initial public comment period then and move to item number one on the agenda. Mr. Bolt?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Bryce Bolde, Minister of Services Director. We have before you this afternoon for possible action are matters pertaining to the city manager position. And you might recall, just a short week ago, interviewed five applicants and scored and evaluated them. And Ms. McKee has put those evaluations together. And today, we're seeking direction, city council direction regarding the city manager candidates. And if we have Sarah on the line, she can take over from this point.
Are you on the line, Sarah?
I am.
All right, go ahead.
So, good afternoon. We have before you the summary of the evaluations that were done by you during the interview process. And as Bryce mentioned, we are seeking direction on how many candidates you would like to move forward in the interview process. And then we should also talk about what that interview process looks like once it's decided upon.
Ms. McKee, this is Mayor McManus. Would you be able to go through briefly the steps where we're at in this process?
So, currently where we are, you had six candidates move to five candidates for the initial interview process. And those candidates were there last week to interview. And then where we are in the process is the council obviously has the decision to move one or five candidates through, whichever is their desire. The list of your evaluations, as I mentioned earlier, are there. It's a comprehensive summary of the evaluations that you did. And then we would be looking to move however many candidates forward to come into an in-person interview. Those can look different ways depending on what you would like. Obviously, we would like to do a tour of the community with those candidates. And if you would like for them to meet with a different panel, or if you just want to interview them yourself. So that's kind of where we are, looking for direction.
Thank you. How long do you believe it would take to arrange for them to be here in Boulder City?
I would say a couple of weeks, Mayor, just to give them some time. Also, we would take at least about two weeks to do all their background checks. And so it would be nice to have those prior to them interviewing, just so in case there's something that pops up. So I would say in a couple of weeks, give them some time to take off if they need to and make their travel arrangements with, and then maybe accommodate families.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? I guess first then would be a decision on how we would like to proceed. We've just heard Ms. McKee indicate it would be a couple of weeks in order to make arrangements and do the background checks. Anyone have questions about that? Any concerns? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. Then I would propose that we would allow two weeks for the backgrounds to be completed with maybe an additional week between, or an additional week after that to compile those background checks, so we have them before any candidates come out, in case there's, like what Ms. McKee said, if there was any issue that came up in the background, that we could address it before they made those arrangements to come out. And then at that time, be able to, you know, have them here physically, so they could have the opportunity to tour Boulder City and to, you know, have an in-person interview.
So that looks to be then putting it in to the week of May 10th?
I would believe that's correct.
All right. Any questions or concerns regarding that timing? I do have a preference that we continue to use the special meeting scheduling for this. We know from past experience that our council meetings can sometimes involve many other issues and take considerable amount of time. I would prefer that we have the time that we need to interview these candidates. I believe also that having an opportunity for members of the public to perhaps meet with them, them to be able to at least take a tour of the city. I know some of the candidates have indicated they're already familiar with Boulder City, but again, I believe that's probably the best way to go about this. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, if I could, concerning the meeting with the public, how would you think that would take place?
I think we have some options available. You know, we could certainly do, not an open house, but we could do something here at City Hall or one of the city facilities where the public could be accommodated in accordance with the guidance that we currently have in place here in Nevada. We know that the announcement is that as of May 1st, we're going to see the guidelines be lessened as far as social distancing and occupancy requirements. But the weather should be pretty good at that time. We may be able to arrange something here at City Hall or in one of our city facilities where we don't have a great number of people congregating at one time to give them an opportunity to meet the candidates. Do you see, do you see any issues with that?
No, I just, perhaps that's something that Mr. Bolt and I can figure out after May 1st and what that looks like.
All right. Any other comments from council regarding something of that nature? Okay, Madam City Clerk, would you prefer to have a motion on that timing?
Yes, unless Councilmember Folda just wanted to put hers into a motion. Do you have anything other than what she already, do you want me to repeat it?
Yeah, would you repeat what you have?
So you moved to allow the background checks to be completed first and add an additional week to address any potential issues with background results, allow an opportunity for the candidates to tour Boulder City, and have an in-person interview.
Councilmember Hoskins?
May I ask a question? Are we talking about all five of the candidates, or are we going to narrow it down prior to...
Well, I think that will be the next step. The next discussion this afternoon is what, where do we go with the number of candidates we currently have?
Okay, thank you.
Does that suffice everyone, or do I need to, we didn't really add a community, you know, opportunity for residents to meet in that motion? So is there one, any comment or discussion?
I believe too, we probably need to identify that the meeting would be held the week of May 10th. Councilmember Adams?
I guess, you know, I certainly am not opposed to, you know, the opportunity for the public to meet with some of the members, but, you know, just because of where we're at and everything like that, I just want to make sure that if we were to do something, it would be obviously very responsible, not that we wouldn't do that, but, you know, as far as, you know, making sure it's part of a motion, if, you know, should something happen and we've got a motion to do something and then can't fulfill that, I wonder if that's a concern or not. I'm not, I'm not certain about, about that aspect of it. But again, it's not that I'm against it, I'm very much in support of it, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't put the cart before the horse here on that.
Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. The, if the council is concerned over things perhaps such as COVID-19 restrictions or things like that with regard to meet and greets with the public, the motion can certainly be to direct staff to explore that as an option, it doesn't have to be mandatory. That is something for you to consider.
Thank you. Councilmember Folda, would you...
Then I would add to the motion that candidate interviews to be conducted the week of May 10th, and that direct staff to investigate options for an opportunity for the residents to have a meeting with the candidates.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. We will then move to the number of candidates to consider. We did the in-person, or excuse me, video interviews with each of the candidates. We have a number of five now. The evaluations have been done. The information on the scoring is in the packet. Questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I guess from my perspective, looking at the scoring evaluations and analysis, I'd be satisfied with taking the top two candidates.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
I guess just as far as comments go about the interviews that were done, I mean, I was very impressed with, with just about everybody who, who interviewed with us. As far as, you know, who I, you know, would like to see moving forward, I think Tetter, Mr. Tetter was certainly a standout in, in their interview. And at the end of the, of the day, even though I'm not sure that she ranked as well as the others, at the, at the end of my day, when I ranked them all, one that did end up standing out to me was Ms. Brown. I obviously, looking at the, at the listing here, I'm not sure if, if any of the other council members share that opinion, but she is somebody that I would still consider. But certainly, I think Mr. Tetter is ready to move on. And I'm, it's not that, you know, then, then with Ms. Brown, but again, if the rest of council judging on, you know, how she scored here with, compared to everybody else, that she might not move forward. So further from there, I would still be open to some other candidates. Again, I thought they all did pretty well.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. So my thoughts were to move forward with three. When I was going through this, I felt like there was definitely three that were very close ranking and didn't really stand above or below each other. That there, that we could move forward with three candidates, I think would be a good amount to have for the background and another, another interview. In this process, we've already lost several managers that were applied, so I didn't want to make it so narrow that we, we didn't have that other option. So I was thinking three. And then if you want me to go ahead and say who those three I think should be, based on the scoring evaluation, I found like the scoring of the, the number, at least on the sheet, you know, a lot of that was how they, how well they articulated, and how well, basically how well they interviewed and spoke. And so that's where the numbers come through. And then the analysis, I feel, was separate and really of how they compared to, and their background and how it compares to the position here in Boulder City. And so when I looked through the, the scoring evaluation and the analysis, didn't match up on one of the candidates, and that was Dana Havlak. So for me, based on the analysis overall, I believe that the three that would, came through as for counsel of the most were Edward Dickey, Forrest Newberg, and Taylor Tetter. So those would be the three that I would propose to, to move forward if we did the top three.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand what you mean, though. We have a point system here. I'm not sure what you mean, that somehow there's, well, I just don't understand what you mean.
Okay, so let me further, so on our agenda, we have a scoring evaluation of possible 300. So those numbers came up based on the number, initially, there was two documents that we used to evaluate. The first one was a straight number system, one, two, or zero, or I think it was like, I don't, sorry, I don't have it in front of me. But the more points you had based on the positives that they had. So what I'm describing here is the difference between the number, the possible 300 number versus the analysis number, which, which breaks it down to lacking, qualified, or superior. Because the second sheet that we used had a process of whether they lacked, whether they were qualified, or whether they were superior. So that was the difference, what I was talking about, whether a high number, you know, one to 3,000, has them numbered here. But then the analysis further has some were lacking versus qualified, when it broke down lacking, qualified, and superior. Does that make sense?
Well, I'm not questioning your logic. I'm just saying that, you know, we have overall scores here to look at. And, you know, if that's how you approach it, is to...
I'm looking at both.
Oh, I understand.
So both have that, I'm just saying that if you look between candidate number, so they're listed high to low on our sheet here, between candidate number two and three, lacking for Edward Dickey, four, lacking for candidate Havlak, 18, qualified for Edward Dickey, 103, qualified for Demahag, 87, superior was tied for 21. That's what I'm saying, what the difference was.
Okay, well, again, though, you know, if we look at how that translates through, I guess, you know, it's your judgment. So if that's how you choose to weight it, I understand, but, you know, each has different scorings and they add up to a total. But any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Ah, yes. I would like to move forward with just the two, Tetter and Newberg, because of their qualifications, their scoring of 3,000. That's the two highest. I'd like to take it down to two instead of three, since we have five.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
I guess just to follow up with, with Folda, I do, you know, not that I, not that I think, you know, at this stage, if we're moving forward, that we would, would lose one hopefully, but, you know, I, you know, I guess it was just really, I was very impressed. And so it is, it is getting hard to try and narrow it down if, I think Mr. Nurburg certainly is capable of the job. So if we were to go forward with just the two, if we were to do the three, obviously, I've suggested, but I do understand where Councilmember Folda is, is coming from with regards to Mr. Dickey's, the analysis side of his thing, in which he did perform better than Mr. Lavitt. But again, those are, those are just papers and, you know, one candidate ended up coming out further from me at the end of it all, after reviewing the, the meetings, regardless of some of the other issues. But I think, you know, all of these things have to be considered. So it seems to be that there's at least a, an agreement and two of the members who should move forward.
Any other questions or comments? You know, from my view, again, I believe that the candidates that had moved forward in the process were clearly qualified. Obviously, some had strengths that others did not. That's part of this evaluation process. And, you know, it's always difficult to say, well, you know, this person did well here, this person did very well over here. But that is what this process is all about, is to try and identify the best candidate for that. So when I look at the numbers, I think that there is a lot of agreement here. I believe too, that coming down to making a final decision on this, you know, we have to move forward at some point. And I also would be in favor of asking the top two candidates to come for their in-person interviews. Again, I felt we had a very good pool of candidates here, but we are at that point where we're going to have to get to a place where we make a decision. And unfortunately, this is how that process works. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I just want us all to be really unanimous on this. So if, you know, I feel like a lot of us are very comfortable with being, taking the top two and going forward, if there's no concern of anyone dropping out at this point, then, then I'm comfortable with that, because I think there's, you know, it's not the top two that we're really arguing over. So, you know, I think if everyone's comfortable with that, with just two, then let's move forward doing such.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
I guess, yeah, I think that, you know, moving forward, there seems to be like a general consensus in that direction at least. And then, you know, to try and to, I think that that probably is the most appropriate way to move forward, just in moving where everybody's consensus seems to be. I think that's, that's appropriate.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges? That was your initial suggestion. Would you like to make a motion then?
Yes, thank you. I would like to move that we, after the two-week period of background checks, invite the top two candidates, Forrest Nurburg and Taylor Tetter, for in-person interview.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Adams?
It's more about process, just in the off chance, you know, I don't think this would be an issue, but just in the off chance, you know, say one or both members come back with some pretty red, big red flags with that background check, how do, how do we move forward with that?
Well, again, at that, well, Madam City Attorney?
And what you could do today, so that you have to, you could eliminate having to come back for another meeting, you could have like a contingency candidate. So if the other two, for some reason, want, don't qualify or drop out, you could have a, others that would take their place.
Based on that, Councilmember Bridges, would you like to modify your motion?
I would need some feedback on that, because we do have a rank order here, but we also seem to have a difference of opinion of who that third possibility would be.
Well, again, I think what Madam City Attorney is referring to is that background checks could be conducted on the five candidates we have. Is that correct?
They can. We could do them on all five, or we could just do them on the contingency candidate.
That's the, that's the question, is in terms of, we have several different possibilities for contingency candidates. We have the rank order, we also have...
Well, I'll defer to Sarah to kind of talk more about the background checks and the cost of that, or recommendations on that.
Ms. McKee?
So generally, yeah, so generally, they're between, I don't know how many degrees they have, generally between 350 and 500 each. So perhaps the better solution was to see if anybody wanted to eliminate any candidate at all. The difficult part of that is if a candidate feels that they're not going to be the one chosen, like if they were contingent candidate, they may just drop out of the process, so...
Councilmember Adams?
You know, I guess in that and with this discussion, you know, I, I feel fairly confident that we have at least two very qualified candidates, who I don't foresee any issues. Like, you know, my question was more just pondering the, the what-ifs. I'm certain that if we find ourselves in a, in a very unfortunate situation, we can address it, should that arise. But, you know, I just wanted to, to see what, you know, try to understand the process and what it might look like. So if we want to just move forward with these two and keep it at that, for right now, we can, I think that that is still appropriate.
Thank you. I'd prefer to move forward with it, with the top two candidates.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Folda? You were just getting ready to vote. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Bolt, is there anything further that we need to provide direction on today?
No, sir, I don't believe so. Sarah and I will work out the logistics for these.
Thank you. Thank you. And Madam City Clerk, I'll just touch base with you, make sure we've, everything is in order from your perspective. All right, with that, we will have our final public comment period then. Public comment during this period may be on any issue. Speakers, again, are, may have up to five minutes, speak on any issue, and as always, please be civil and concise. The phone number is 702-589-9629.
Madam City Council?
Yeah, I'm gonna hang up.
Did the call do any, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Again, this is our final public comment period. Madam City Clerk, did we have any written submissions?
No, Mayor.
Again, anyone wishing to speak? All right, hearing no one for public comment, we will close the public comment period. Again, thank you to staff, and we are adjourned.